Please, the October seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, City of States for our City Council meeting. We're going to begin our meeting today with an invocation and pledge of allegiance by Council and Tribe District Chairman. Council Chairman.
Chief of Staff. Lord, we come to you tonight to say thank you for another great day in our blessed community. We ask that you continue to watch over us, watch over our city, our great state and our great country. We ask that you guide us tonight in all our decisions and all of our decisions going forward. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Do I, from the United States of America, and through the Republic of which it stands, we're one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are at one slide addition to the presentation or proclamation after our asked about public comments. Ms. Sue, do we have anybody that has registered to make a public comment regarding the agenda item?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Agenda item three A is a presentation of a proclamation honoring October two thousand and seventeen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is Ms. Billings in the house?
Yes.
If you don't mind, how about say you are? Listen, I can wipe my phone.
Oh.
Sorry.
My name is Kim Billings and this is Barbara Reed, our Executive Director. We work at Safe Haven, which is a domestic violence shelter in state.
And Ms. Billings asked if we could make sure that here it is. I'm going to read it out. That's okay. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas domestic violence leaves an imprint of fear and hostility, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not consigned to any group or groups of people across all economic, racial, affectional preference and social barriers, thereby affecting society as a whole. And whereas, and city state's adults and children are victims of violence each year. And whereas, State's for City Council is committed to restoring the right to freedom from fear in our own homes. And whereas, the State's for City Council is committed to restoring the right to freedom from fear in our own communities. And whereas, in our quest to impose sanctions on those who break the law by perpetrating violence, we must also meet the needs of victims of domestic violence and their children who often suffer grave financial, physical, and psychological losses. In therefore being resolved, now in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs in cooperation with Safe Haven, I am Mayor of the City of States for, on behalf of the entire City Council, just hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand and seventeen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We urge all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together as a team in our community through prevention, intervention, and education programs to eliminate domestic violence and overcome violence for the community. Thank you so much. You've raised all the attention today. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all for that. Agenda item four is a consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I will ask the Council to please look over. What is on the consent agenda and then ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I oppose. Motion carries. Agenda item five, consideration of a motion for approval on an intergovernmental agreement regarding the participation of Bull County in payment of a proportion of its tax increment to the City of States for Tax Allocation District. This has been a long time coming, but aren't we happy?
We are.
Go ahead, take it, tell us in brief what we are.
This is, the city has set up the TAD for the downtown, downtown area of Conley, you know, it's TAD number one for the city's redevelopment agency where the city, the amount of, as the value of the property goes up, the amount collected by the city would go up, but we would cap what we collect at the base and then the increment, which would be the property tax on the appreciation of the land within the TAD, would go into the TAD special fund. So this was adopted by the city on, effectively, December thirty first, two thousand and fourteen. Shortly thereafter, negotiations went into place, the county started including the county's tax implement in that special fund, which would have as a double, you know, a big one that you can put into the TAD fund. So after months of going back and forth, the City and Council officials came up with an intergovernmental agreement that would allow for county participation in the city's TAD number one. And it was passed by county resolution on October third, two thousand and seventeen, the intergovernmental agreement with the city. And this agreement has not yet been approved or ratified by the city, so that's why it's being presented today, because the IGA does not take it back until both parties have the authority to do it. And I'll give some highlights of just, in essence, what this intergovernmental agreement allowed for. And this is for, it was presented for consideration that would allow the county to participate in the community effort to revitalize, to revitalize the South Main Street area. City adopted the tax allocation district for the area, Conley, known as the Blue Mile Downtown State for an adjacent areas to the north, south, and east. The redevelopment plan for the area was also commissioned by the city, and all TAD expenditures and debt obligations will be for projects within the district and in accordance with the redevelopment plan. City created a digest of the taxable values of all properties within the TAD that was certified by State Commissioner of Revenue as of December thirty first, two thousand and fourteen. At that time, the value of the base was certified at thirty-eight million, eight-hundred-eight five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The positive tax allocation increment is the difference between the base taxable value and the current taxable value of the real property. City's been depositing all property taxes collected on the increment of this special TAD fund since the beginning of two thousand and fifteen. And the county contribution, as long as the county has a tax rate higher than the city, county will settle the match, match the city's contribution to the fund. In that case, it's out the county's contribution to the city. These funds shall be allowed to approve and will only be returned to the city and county in the event of termination of the TAD agreement this IGA is presenting tonight. TAD funds will be used to spur development by paying for improvements and to secure and pay off TAD financing for the city's borrow money for financial institutions or issues revenue bonds to be repaid with incremental revenue. The TAD advisory committee will be appointed to three members appointed by the city and three members appointed by the county. The committee will develop TAD policies and procedures to be presented to the county, to the council for adoption and to evaluate projects. Upon approval by a simple majority of the committee, the project will then be presented to the county council for consideration. This council may not consider or proceed with any project or offer TAD financing for any, for any project without approval by the committee. Destruction of or improvements to government buildings is expressly prohibited. Should no significant projects be undertaken within ten years of the adoption of this IGA, the TAD shall terminate. Otherwise, the TAD shall terminate by December thirty first, two thousand and thirty-nine at the latest, and no TAD shall issue that will not be fully repaid by that date. Inclusion of school board increment funds and committee members has also been contemplated and provided for in the presented IGA. City shall report on TAD status and progress to the county on an annual basis, and both city and county shall retain one percent of the increment for imputed administrative costs. And so, we're presenting this, Kelly has approved and executed this contract, so asking today the council to consider and approve our inclusion in it as well.
Is that ten years from the day this executed happened, Lawrence?
Yes, we should be asking that, Mary.
That's right, that's my question. Okay. And it is when the digest is frozen?
It is, it's always, every, the base for the entire district will be that December thirty first, two thousand and fourteen day.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Comments?
Now, I want to just briefly thank, this is, this is one of those messy governance things that we were trying to work out an agreement between two entities, the city and the county, it just took a while to do. And I wanted to thank the property owners for their patience and working through them. I know how much work it was, we talked a lot. And just want to thank you for that. Recognize your very hard-won process.
Thank you.
May, can I throw out a couple of thank yous too, while we're?
Absolutely. We like that, yes.
Well, yeah, I, in addition to Robert and Randy, I mean, the entire staff, I want to thank them for their long-term efforts over the last three years in getting this deal put together, working out the details with the Bull County staff and the Board of Commissioners, you know, it's a complex agreement, and we appreciate the work that you guys have done. We want to thank Al Mulder, too, and the DSDA boards, multiple boards, that have worked on this for more than, when they started this vision more than five years ago. I also want to thank the South Main Revitalization folks, now known as the Blue Mile Committee, for their tireless advocacy and efforts to get the TAD passed with this resolution. And lastly, I do want to kind of say something to the Bull County School Board and implore them to join us on this effort. It's especially important considering the community is now considering the East Blosd Initiative, which one cent of every sales tax dollar will go to the school boards. You know, the school board, in addition to that one cent, they also get another one, so they get two cents of every sales tax dollar. So anything our community can do together to foster continued growth for our commercial properties, our residential properties, and our industrial properties benefits us all. And increase in retail especially benefits the Bull County school system. So again, I implore them, their board, to consider this carefully and quickly and join both us and the county on this TAD initiative. It's a, it's not just a win-win, it's a win-win for the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. Anybody else before I ask for a vote? If not, do I have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement regarding participation of Bull County in payment of a proportion of its tax increment to the City of States for TAD?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item six, public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve an application, RZ seventeen ten zero one. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Welcome to the public hearing. Mike, can you please introduce this slide?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor. First item we have tonight is RZ seventeen dash ten dash oh one. Property is located at Lanier Drive. The applicant is Paul Walsh, and he is requesting a rezoning from R four High Density Residential to Commercial Retail. And the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment of point seven acres of property that fronts Lanier Drive and is immediately south of Rumblewood. From R four High Density Residential to Commercial Retail District, in order to construct a small strip center with apartments on the upper floors. If you notice on the map here, the location is highlighted in blue, proposed site plan, and we'll discuss that, recommendations here towards the end. This is the location, the property is currently vacant. It backs up to the apartments to the rear, to the left, you'll see a portion of what I call the old Waffle House there, you'll see the front end of that there, and the alley or roadway that goes back to the apartments on the top. But again, now, the subway that's used to be the Waffle House and that's looking down Lanier. Staff did recommend approval of the rezoning, and Plating Commission agreed six to zero with the condition that we are only approving the rezoning, we're not approving this site plan. The development will have to meet all development requirements as part of the development of that property. The staff recommended approval, Plating Commission voted six oh to approve the rezoning, with the condition that development will have to meet all development requirements and will not be based on that site plan. It will submit, I believe we have some representation here today.
Yes, sir. Yes, we really don't have any.
Thank you, I'm fine. I'm standing for the door, and we live here at the Burchard Hathaway, and I'm a representative seller and purchaser on this. Can you go back to that?
Sure.
One before that. The apartment's behind that blue square is owned by an individual that is making, has the contract to purchase that, and he wants to join that with his apartments. He's trying to indicate it's sewn all forward, and what he'd like to do is a real combination of some small retail spaces with some apartments. Retail spaces would be something maybe a coffee shop or a coffee center, it would not be anything real large, possibly UPS store. But he feels that people would like to utilize that piece of land and join it with his existing man of the apartments. Frank very much explained everything, he cannot build his site plan, and what he would like to do is present it back to the city, to the city for approval. The request is in conjunction and conformed with everything around that north, south, east, and west. It's either commercial or R four, and we would like to ask you to consider, because we have this zone change. Any questions?
Do we have anybody else here that would like to speak for or against this zoning request? If there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on application, RZ seventeen ten zero one?
So moved.
Do you have any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this council having, would like to enter any discussion before I ask for a motion. If not, do, I'm assuming that you have a like this motion to approve staff recommendation on the submitted schedule plans, are correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the application, RZ seventeen ten zero one, with staff recommendations attached to be met?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have any discussion? If not, all in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is open, Mr. Neal?
Yes, ma'am, the next item we have is RZ seventeen dash oh nine dash oh two, is a zoning map amendment request. This property is located at two oh four Roundtree Street. The applicant is Mr. Robert Byrd, and current owner is Garfield Joyce Senior, representing the property owners. This property is point one four acres. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from R six Single Family Residential to CR Commercial Retail Zoning District, in order to operate a farmer's market, picnic area, and parking lot that will join his existing barbecue and restaurant business. You'll see here, and highlighted in the blue area, is the property in question for the rezoning, and the property right in front of it with the CR where that, the dead roof is, is the existing restaurant that this property will be doing a part of. This is the pictures of the lot itself and the fence of the restaurant there in the background. Again, looking down Roundtree towards the restaurant and the stop sign of MLK, and the property again on top there. These are the residential properties across the street and then the corner of Roundtree and MLK on that top picture. And again, looking down Roundtree in the opposite direction. Staff did recommend approval of this request. Plating Commission agreed a six oh vote as well to approve this property with the one exception, the applicant submitted a site plan showing a shed and a covered shelter, and we were just asking that the shed be placed on the property lot adjoining the restaurant instead of on the residential side. And the property owner has been agreeing with that. And I believe we have some representation within this whole time.
Okay, do we have representation? If you could please state your name for us.
Robert Byrd.
Yes, sir.
And what we want to do is, is get some fresh vegetables in our community and then more parking. We don't, we don't have much parking in that area, and we'd like to have, and then the lot in question, you can't build anything on it. It's, all you can do is just either park on it or just keep the grass there. So from, all the lots in that area that's so small, once you tear a house down, you can't build nothing else on it. So I do need parking. So I have five parking places at my business, and I just, I would just like to extend with what we're going to do, make the community look better, like, because it was nothing but woods and a forest, and if you pass by there, if you're driving down that street, once you pass over little houses, there's nothing but woods. And that's right across from AutoZone, and it's just a kind of busy area, and they gave a place sale about two weeks ago. Mr. Lorenzo Merritt donated two hundred plates. People have been working hard. So that, that's my biggest question today. And I've never had any problem at my place, and we've never had the police to have to come, late night parties and all that kind of stuff. So like a family area, it'll only be open until maybe eight o'clock or nine o'clock, nothing real late at night. It's never been that. So I'd like you all to help me with it if you can.
Did, did I understand that you had a letter of support or something from your neighbors?
Yes, ma'am, I have all support, and I have a sign I have, all the residents.
Someone's had it seen.
We got a list of about.
The ones that's joining the property, those are the names that I have.
And we have not had anyone speak negatively or collate about the property. Yeah, he's got ten property owners on Roundtree that are supporting.
Okay.
And he still works, too, most of the time isn't a problem.
Is anybody here, anybody else here that would like to speak regarding this zoning request?
I'd add, I'm familiar with the property, and have a chance to eat at my place and have a good restaurant, and definitely a decent community, so that's a good thing. I could, it'd be market, and should be a good addition.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Mr. Byrd? Comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
In that case, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on application, RZ seventeen oh nine oh two?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve application, RZ seventeen zero nine zero two, with staff recommendations attached?
So moved, which is down, recommendations. So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item eight, public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application, V seventeen ten zero two. Do I have a motion to approve the public hearing? Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item eight, public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application, V seventeen ten zero two. Do I have a motion to approve the public hearing? Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Frank?
Yes, ma'am, this is item number V seventeen dash ten dash oh two. It is a variance request for four oh nine Clareborn Avenue. The applicant is Whitfield Signs, the property owner of South Main Properties LLC, named John Lavender. His property is the new YMCA location. The variance is from Article fifteen, Section fifteen oh nine C, Table three, the State's for zoning ordinance regarding maximum square footage allowed for one, freestanding sign and one building sign assigned district one. And best explanation, if you'll look on your second page of your package, it kind of breaks it down. The freestanding sign cannot exceed forty square feet, and they request a sixty-six point one. And the building sign, again, cannot exceed forty square feet, and they have one oh nine point two square feet building sign. Staff did recommend approval, and Plating Commission agreed six oh, and our recommendation is based primarily, as you'll see, the site is the old school, and the school location is a very large site, and it's a lot of building space out there. We don't think this is excessive signage, we think it's probably appropriate for the amount of building that is going out there. And you'll see these little side views. This corner, the top one, is where the freestanding sign will be located, on the corner there. This is looking down Brandon. On the top and on the bottom is looking down to Tilly Square and the road, and that's the corner right there where that freestanding sign will be located, again, here at that corner, again, with a freestanding. Staff did recommend approval, Plating Commission recommended approval. The only item we did add for staff approval was that engineering go out and check the site location, make sure there's no site distance requirements or issues with that intersection. We don't expect they're too big, but, and I believe there may be someone here representing the line.
My name is Josh Whitfield, Whitfield Signs, and I will be representing YMCA. We're asking for a sign variance here for the monument, the building sign, mainly to meet the Y's standard, sign standards they use at all their campuses. It's actually on the smaller side from what they typically do. The zoning being residential doesn't really take into consideration the use like this for the YMCA and such a large school. They've got to revitalize that building, and we're trying to get visibility on that corner that's facing the commercial retail. So the monument sign actually will not be facing the residential, it'll be facing the intersection, and it'll be single-sided facing that intersection. And the building sign will be on the other side facing, on the side of the building. We had to make it that size just so you could actually see it with all the copy on a sized building, so it didn't look like a postage stamp on there. But everything does meet the Y clubs, the YMCA's standards, and the monument sign, we will keep out of the side triangle for engineering as well. Any questions? We got answers.
And the building sign is not a lit sign, is it?
No, it is not, it's just a metal standoff sign.
And I failed to mention, we did have one resident come in with concerns about the signage. It was primarily the monument sign, but after we showed them the location, they were very comfortable with that, they thought it was going to be on an opposite corner, so they were fine.
Does anybody else want to speak regarding this request? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on application, V seventeen ten zero ten?
So moved.
Do you have any discussion? All in favor of this statement, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item nine, consideration of a motion to approve the resolution two zero one seven dash thirty five.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. This, as you know, we parent our KSBV coordinator, Ms. Megan Jackson, and as part of the creation of our Clean and Beautiful Program, we are having to migrate the program from the county to the city, a state organization. As part of that requirement, we're required to have bylaws, pass a resolution to support it, and basically have a letter from the mayor requesting that migration. And tonight, we have all three of those on agenda, we want to ask for your approval. And I might add, although we're just now getting the formal documents to you, Megan has been full steam ahead. We've had our first cleanup last weekend, or weekend before last, it was very successful. Our man on the west side of the community, there in the green house, she had nearly a hundred volunteers, and they picked up a lot of trash, so she's up and running, and we just ask for your approval on this.
I would like to thank, give a little shout out to Representative Jan Piper Sland. She is very passionate about Keep Georgia Beautiful, and has been very passionate about our county, city participating in that. In fact, last year, she got us the ten thousand dollar grant that allows us to, again, to open up this position and get restarted. So I thank Representative Piper Sland for that. Do I have a motion to approve application V seventeen ten zero two?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item item nine, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one seven dash thirty five.
Uh, yes, ma'am, mayor. This, as you know, we parent our K S B B coordinator, Ms. Megan Jackson, and as part of the creation of our Keep Beautiful program, uh, we are having to migrate the program from the county to the city under the state organization. Um, as part of that requirement, we're required to have bylaws, pass a resolution to support it, and, um, basically have a letter from the mayor, uh, requesting that migration. And tonight we have all three of those on agenda, want to ask for your approval. And I might add, although we're just now getting the formal documents to you, Megan has been full steam ahead. We've had our first cleanup last weekend, or weekend before last, and it was very successful. Our man on the west side of the community, there in the green house, she had nearly a hundred volunteers and they picked up a lot of trash, so she's up and running. And we just asked for your approval on this.
And I would like to thank, give a little shout out to Representative Janne Tippersley. Um, she is very passionate about Keep Georgia Beautiful and has been very passionate about our county, um, city participating in that. In fact, um, last year she got us the ten thou- ten thousand dollar grant that allows us to begin and open up this position and get restarted. So I thank Representative Tippersley for that.
If she were here, she'd tell you now. Anyway, do we have anybody, let's say, any questions before I ask for a motion on this? If not, do I have a motion to approve resolution two zero one seven dash thirty five?
So move.
Now second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please state, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item item ten, consideration of a motion to reject all bids, unless I'll be done. Right.
Brad, the old city is near. I'll start off by just briefly giving a little bit of background information on this project. Um, the South College Street headwall project includes a construction of two concrete headwalls, one on each side of the street, around the ends of two eighty-four inch pipe culvers that run under South College Street in the Little Life street area. It's a major drainage ditch for the city. Uh, the purpose of the headwalls is to prevent erosion, which is destabilize the pipe culvers of the year. Uh, plans for the project were developed by Parker Engineering. Uh, the project was advertised for thirty days and sealed bids were received on September the nineteenth. Uh, the low bid of two hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-seven cents from Southeastern Civil was about a hundred ten thousand dollars over our budget, which was a hundred eighty thousand dollars. So that comes out to about, uh, fifty percent over budget. Uh, the estimate that we had done for the project, uh, was based on a headwall construction project that we did in, uh, two thousand thirteen on West Grady Street. And that was where we constructed one headwall, which was about, uh, the cost was thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, the size of the wall that we built on West Grady Street was a little bit smaller than the, uh, the proposed wall that we go, the proposed walls that we go on South College Street. Uh, the size of the South College Street walls would be about one and a half times the size of the West Grady Street, uh, headwall. So it's still not exactly proportional in cost, uh, but we feel like we took all the, uh, the differences into account in the estimate though, and, uh, I think Westy Parker's here, any questions come up, though he was our design engineer on the project. So the cost broken down per headwall in the low bid was about four times higher than the West Grady headwall that we did in two thousand thirteen. Uh, the low bidder said that he had concerns about the volume of water that flowed through the ditch and, uh, some safety concerns about the close proximity of the wall to the street. Uh, and, and we're kind of understanding of that, but we did have those, some of those same elements on the West Grady Street location as well. So I'd say we kind of understand it, but we don't completely, we're not totally clear on why the price was quite as high as it was. Uh, after opening the biz, uh, we met with the low bidder and the design engineer to attempt to negotiate prices and modify the project to break it down within the budget as allowed by the purchasing policy. Uh, the contractor did offer one solution for us, which was to basically delete one of the headwalls on one side of the street. And that would have brought the total cost down to a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars roughly, which would have been under our budget. But, uh, we didn't really feel comfortable with the far, with that solution because still just one headwall for a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars when we just built one, uh, four years ago for about thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, so what we feel like we need to, uh, the opportunity to work with the design engineer and try to investigate any concerns that contractors had and see if we can modify any of the designer specifications. And also maybe just to get some more competitive bids, because we only received two bids, uh, for the project. And I did talk to, uh, the contractor who built the headwall on West Grady Street for us. He said that he was too busy with the bid on, on the project and we think that may have something to do also with the fact that we only got two bids and they're both kind of high, so. Um, that's pretty much the summary of it, and, uh, if anybody has any questions, let me know and I'd say Westy Parker's here if you will. Oh, there he is.
You got a question when you put the biz out, I guess we like to do this back for legal section like before?
Yes, sir, that's right. We kind of follow our normal procedure, which is the station for Harold. We've run it, uh, two times, usually at least, we have a minimum of two times, so I think that we ran it two times this time. Uh, we used to do it on Sunday to get the most, uh, views on it, so, yes, sir, that's true. And that's what we normally do.
Brad, I certainly appreciate what you're saying about the diligence that you put forth to investigate the whole project, but what, what significance are the repercussions to waiting, I mean?
It's a good question. Um, it's, it's been that way for several years and just within the last, I guess, year or more, we went in and did some repairs just to kind of score up where we had our pipe.
About three years ago, uh, about three years ago, we actually went in and put the pipe back in and actually from the part. Uh, but now with the, I'm telling you right now, with the former, we have made this group and we have our biz, but we can all there and make sure, you know, we get to that point and try to draft the erosion before we get to a whole way, you know, and be destructuring. So I think that, that could buy some time to actually get back and, and, uh, regroup and see if we can find a way to bring those costs down. I feel confident that we can, you know, take care of it in a bit.
So essentially you're addressing it with labor as opposed to a permanent structure?
That's right, temporarily.
Thank you, ma'am.
So it doesn't sound like it's going to fall. Just out of curiosity, go back and get, look at the, the design, what you can do to reduce those concerns. Do they go back out for what, sixty days, ninety days?
I would expect, uh, yeah, somewhere in that range, maybe sixty days or so.
Yeah.
Plus that's the, you know, during the winter time, the contractors aren't as busy. We may get more bids than we are be as tied up as they were right now, or they were, or when we bid it up.
Anything else, sir? All right, do I have a motion to reject all bids for the South College Street headwall construction project?
So move. Second.
Do you have any discussion? All in favor, please state, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I can't believe you said that, counsel. That was fair.
Really, Brad.
Yeah, really true.
Yeah, absolutely.
Send what the board, send us a little bit of this.
I don't want to move on that.
That one idea was not really what we wanted, wanted out. All right, so item item eleven is discussion on T-SPOST and moving forward, so, how, do you guys do that? All right.
Thanks, mayor. It's a while ago, where it's probably been a month and a half, maybe two months ago, that myself and Mr. Rick Moore and representatives from the other three cities within both counties, went to the county and heard a presentation by the county manager, uh, where we discussed T-SPOST, transportation SPOST. And, uh, we got some in-depth information. I'll show a couple slides here in a minute and talk about timelines, and that's primarily what we were discussing, the timelines. On if we decided to do a local T-SPOST and put that before, on a referendum for the public to vote on, and we wanted to touch you for the spring, what those timelines would need to be and what we need to have in place. At the same time that we were discussing that, of course, they asked, are we in support of the T-SPOST at this time? And Mr. Rick Moore and both felt, you know, yes, we're interested, we've done it before, but we couldn't commit to anything without speaking to each of you. Now we've done that, we've met with each of you individually and I think discussed it in, in good depth and some good detail. And so really what we want to do tonight, I was going to talk about it, some of the timelines here, um, but really want to ask you to publicly authorize the city manager to continue those discussions with the county and develop the intergovernmental agreement that's going to be part of a requirement, which we would hopefully bring back to you to vote on to proceed with the referendum with the county. So two timelines that this slide shows, of course, is the T-SPOST itself, which the thought is to try to vote on that in May of this spring, so May twenty-second of twenty eighteen. And I put the SPOST up there as well. These came from slides that the county manager presented, so I'm just, uh, reiterating those. The other is to, of course, we have a SPOST as well. So the T-SPOST, as you know, is an additional opinion, the SPOST being the continuation of the opinion, uh, through a six-year period. This is actually, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rick Moore, but I think we're, we would accelerate the vote on the SPOST, actually move it up a year, uh, just so we would have a continuance of that money, should it not pass for some reason, we can vote on it again that common year, not lose any of those six years of funding. Uh, so that's the two things. The primary one I'm talking about is the May twenty-second, we see it only a few months away, Frank, if you change that. This is really the timelines we need to be meeting and, and we're meeting them so far as a, at a staff level. We've been working on, um, T-SPOST lists for, for a long time because we do it similar to what we do for our C I P program. The T-SPOST is very similar, but of course it's just transportation related, so we extracted those items that we have in our C I P, but we also utilize the strategic plan, as we can hear from the public, things that they like, which obviously you've got your things such as sidewalks and pedestrian and bike safety, and then you've got things from engineering, your intersection improvements, lots of lists. That's what I like about a T-SPOST, it's, it's, uh, it's fairly general. Anything that's related to transportation, basically, you can, you can fund through this, uh, obviously as a staff would love to see it. And so the main dates, I think, that I wanted you to see there, we're working on those lists now, so you see that right up through November, complete the, the draft project list, uh, and send those to the elected officials of the county. Really the dates that, that we need to be looking at are December, and that is when we have to have that intergovernmental agreement signed all along by all the cities so that we get the, put that on the county and then maybe get into the election officials when we get on referendum in the spring. So, and I've already, we've shared this with each of you already, so, and given this to you, so I didn't know if you had any questions about that in general, but one of us might be able to answer. But again, what we're looking for tonight is just authorization, authorization publicly for us to continue, I wouldn't know what I call negotiations as much as, uh...
Discussions, uh, to come up with, uh, with a formula in the matter of how that funding would actually be divided between the city and the county. And we just, we just started those in the last week or two, so we, we still have work to do, but as you can tell by that timeline, we're gonna have to move that along to, to get that completed.
What about, um, are we going to join in with the county and the other cities on the public hearing, is this?
We could.
I mean, wasn't that originally what the public wants versus having lots of public hearings or, as if one, two public hearings on the city? I don't see it listed on here.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's a, um, kind of an in-between.
Do we need that, do we need that other slide?
We need one right there, just to get it.
There's, I think in December, it says an official meeting required by code to discuss the project.
Is that the public hearing we're talking about or, after some reason I remember I had, there was a public...
We were, we had, we had, we talked about having, having as, as many as four different meetings to get that information out so, so people can have a good understanding about what it is we're talking about, talk about some of the projects we might, might be able to do with the funding. So, once we, once we have another meeting with the county, by that, by the meeting, the first meeting in, uh, in November, we'll bring back that, that kind of schedule for you and see what it's gonna be like. If you just want to have one big one, I guess we can, we can do that as well.
I mean, as, as we talked about when we get the one, it can then still...
It's a little closer.
It's a little closer, so...
I think it makes sense to have potentially a joint and then maybe a, a separate one when we do have some projects that...
I mean, we can have separate ones, I mean, to, so it doesn't make it quite as complicated.
Right.
But I was just wondering because you have to have it in December, right? No later they have.
Yeah, well...
Because you gotta execute that intergovernmental agreement.
But I would, yes, I, I agree with that, but I think we would continue to have a good educational process even after...
Yeah, but I'm just talking about so that we do everything we're supposed to do.
I don't know if that requires a standing plan, I don't believe it.
I don't know, I saw that for something.
Um, I have to confirm that. You have to have an official meeting, but I don't know that that's necessarily a public hearing type meeting. I don't think that's a requirement more of, or it makes common, some good common sense that you should have.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll confirm it, yeah.
Because typically, you know, there's only one meeting, that first meeting in December.
Right.
So I, I'm, I'm wondering if that intergovernmental agreement would be ready by that time.
It only needs to be done ninety days before the vote, correct?
Yes.
So we still have some time in, in, in January and early February, isn't it?
Well, let's confirm that because it's sitting right there on the calendar's time one to execute December something.
Yeah, certainly, certainly tight. We, we gotta get on it. We've got the list ready and we, and in a format that we can present to the county that says you have to give the reason for each one, what your lists are, so we've got everything ready, it's just a process of getting that out there and...
Get the fine details under any, which we're working on now.
Okay, so you would, you would like for counsel to have a motion. Uh, what, what exactly you want us to do? Let's not listen here.
It's just, it's just to authorize us officially to, that, that counsel is in support of the T-SPOST and you want us to continue to work on that.
Okay. Do I have a motion for counsel in support of rescinding it?
Before we go there, do we need to discuss, um, how you guys are gonna go for it, or, you know? Because I believe the, the current offer on the table is still, or at least the first, it's kind of like a salary negotiation, somebody's gotta fill the number out first and county is basically throwing it out there that they want to move it by population, is that correct?
Correct.
But I would say, I would venture to say that the majority of people that live in the county drive in the city every day, but the majority of people that live in the city do not necessarily drive in the county.
Well, we had, we had those conversations and...
And we've, have started those conversations as, as well.
Okay.
Different ways to...
Well, there are, you said, well, there are a couple things, like we don't want to use the two thousand and ten census number.
Right.
Number one. And then you have to take into consideration, you've got, uh, a number of students that live in the city.
Right.
That are using the roadways, which are not taken into account our census numbers, so I believe you all have, talked about that.
All of the things you discussed with us tonight, didn't we?
Yeah, all those, all those are gonna be on the table and, and then when we, when we come to some preliminary decision, we'll bring that back and, and we'll see what kind of progress we've made at the beginning and we can, we can talk from there.
As you know, this is a, an additional sales tax and the majority of the burden to create shopping or have those type of facilities available due to water, gas, sewer, fire, sanitation, uh, most of the sales tax is generated within the city, so that's just another thing to be considered.
Correct, and, and we are.
I'm trying to be nice, man. For now. Maybe they can back with...
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's, I think, I think that Randy Robert has explained completely where we're coming from, but they were just... Okay. In that case, do I have a motion to authorize the city manager's staff to continue the preliminary negotiations regarding the city's participation with the county in three of the cities within the county in T-SPOST?
So move. I'll second it. Second.
Who moved it?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Sorry. I thought I had a tip, sorry. Do you want to step on the tip?
Okay. So Councilman Boyer has motioned. Councilman Yorn has submitted. Do we have any discussion? In that case, all in favor, please state, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yes.
Okay. Now we get to the front part. Other business from the city council. Do we have any other business from the city council? Anything that someone would like to add? There you go. City manager's comments.
I've just got a couple things. Uh, y'all approved that extra mill, uh, a month or so ago. Uh, staff is working on a, uh, salary schedule for the, for the police department. That will be getting back, uh, the first meeting in November for your review and hopefully approval, uh, but that will be definitely coming back. Staff has, has started work on that. And the other thing is, just, just real quick, is the customer service update that I said I would have in September, but every meeting since September, we've had long meetings, so tonight, I'm gonna hit, hit some of those things that we've done in, uh, in the past year. Uh, some of those are, is that we started the Right Start meetings, which assist developers in making things go more smoothly, and we've heard positive things about that. We had a customer service class where we have about a hundred employees who were, uh, involved in that, and hopefully that will improve our internal and external customer service. And as you know, we have a new P D website, our department is working on a, on... And as you know, we have a new P D website, our department is working on a, on a new website, and the city-wide website is getting started here in the next week or so. We're also creating customer service for our newly hired employees, so from the very start, when they start working for us, they're gonna know that that's something that is important, part of their job, that they're gonna have to perform at, and that will also become part of their annual evaluation. Public Works is working on a Facebook page and Twitter account, and I think during the storm, when that happened, you were getting, how many people liked you guys during that, that short period of time when the hurricanes came in?
I think there was ten, both, during that period.
Yeah, so that's, that's working well. Planning is cross-training their staff, so everybody can, can take care of customers as, as they come for permits and requests for information. We're reviewing ordinance and make those more streamlined, and you've had a couple of those come, come through planning on the signs here just, just recently. We did the auto reading meters, which now, I think we can say, we're getting more efficient as they're, as some of those books are getting ironed out. But they're foolproof, but they, but they are in improvement. We created that new online application process for the utility connects, as the students were coming in this year, and that, that was helpful. And really, so that went off pretty much without a hitch. I think Solomon's, is Solomon's, but Solomon had a lot of work to do with that towards so smoothly. And also, we've extended hours for city hall from eight to five thirty, and now every day, and now, rather than eight, eight thirty to five. So that seems to be working well, and also doing smoothly. So those are just some of the things we've done during the last year, to try to make things a little bit smoother for people that are coming to the city for, for each time.
Okay, so I got a couple of questions on what you said. I do, I, I have got a number of people that have said that customer service has been very good, so I think that training is a good one. Thank you very much for that. When are we looking at painting and everything in the front? Did you know I'm just gonna keep asking?
I know.
You know, it's just, it's not, don't stop questioning the asking, it's not the worst.
And, and I just talked to Sterling today, in anticipation of questions, and it should be within a couple weeks. We should be done, painted, done. Out of a final.
Not November.
Let's go for the first meeting.
Wait until April.
Let's go for the first meeting in.
First meeting in November.
I like that idea, Christmas break, since, but no, we are.
Well, we're saying it's away from the.
We definitely know that, that that's something we want to get, that's, we do.
Excellent. I did have, somebody asked me about, it was, it's a constituent, it was on like, I don't know, like, and said that they would really like it if we could, I don't know if this is doable or not, but they said that when they drop off their water payment, they'd like the vehicle, because they don't want to restring it. And there's a line, people that, they just want to be able to, we can put a drop box in the back, and they'd be just drive by and drop it in the box. And no going through or any of that business.
And we've looked into that, like, every spot we have, it isn't gonna be, the people can drop it off easily without blocking a lot of, some, some cars. So somebody asked the back end, just be momentary, so it should be a big inconvenience. So it's just a matter of getting the right box at the right price put in, and we should be able to.
There is, you can't drop, drop it off after hours, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so there's a drop, there is a drop off box in the driveway.
Right, and it's like, when they pull up in the morning, and they just want to be able to drop it off, and there's a line that's hanging out of the driveway, and if, and if a little box makes it easier.
Have somebody run out and drive it.
I mean, it's just a box, and you just do that, and you just drop it in the box, and you're, during the day, and you're not in one.
We can't, there's all kinds of things we can touch, but we are, yeah. Robert, his guy's out.
Okay, that's okay. Throw it away, Robert, throw that, just want to drop on four wheel, just drop it and drop it off. You tell him, Bill. So I want, did you go get questions on this, I want to be clear. We talked about bringing forth the proposed new police entry level, those salaries for patrol, and from council, no member.
Right.
First meeting.
Yep.
But not to go into effect until.
January first would be the, would be.
January first, so Chief Rockhead would be able to advertise that in January first of November.
Once it's.
Once it's set.
Yep.
Okay.
Part of a budget, I think.
Cindy shaking her head, correct.
Okay, so we.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions?
That's it.
All right. Do, Miss, does anybody register, like, a public comment?
I didn't register, but I'd like to.
Well, come on.
First.
Well, you're down.
Only.
And last.
We try to keep those around three minutes or so, and if you can tell, should that.
Coincidentally, I came in to pay my water bill. And I've been able to know that you had a council meeting going on, and so, being that it's a three-term city councilman in Youngstown, Ohio, I decided to come here, and after spending thirty-four years in Las Vegas, I've been down here, I just wanted to compliment every person in here, including the mayor. It'd be so easy for me to make up my mind when I vote, you'd be able to lead my vote.
I got one.
Two, you did vote for.
Two, I hope you saw that.
And Youngstown was like, known pretty much in those days, it was about close to fifty years ago, as crime town USA and bomb town USA. This does not resemble what we had going in council meeting, you guys should make yourself proud.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Make sure you guys write about that, Brian. Tom, write about that, Brian.
Okay, now, do, I would like a motion entered to executive session to discuss real estate, do I have a motion?
So moved. Aye.
Any discussion? I will favorably state a second aye. If y'all have anything we need to sign, glad you're here. Run up, we'll sign real quick, and ask everybody to.